Planning Board, it's October 2nd at 6:30 PM. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live individually recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Google Meet presumed Section 20 of the Acts of 2021, allowing for public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. We do have a quorum of the board in the room and we don't have any members that are online, so any votes we have, we can just run as a regular vote, not have to do a roll call. So. Moving into the agenda, the first thing we have on the list is public comments. Do we have any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda from anybody or anybody online? Hearing none, moving forward to acceptance of the minutes of the previous meeting. And this goes back to August 15th. So the the meeting minutes have been made available to everybody through the Google Drive and they've also been set for you in the meeting book for this evening.
Respectfully submitted from the last time.
Yes, and respectfully submitted for the last time by Patricia Love.
Good job.
Not leaving the town, just leaving our direct service. If there's no major questions or concerns, can I get a motion on and then we'll hold in discussion for corrections?
I'll make a motion that we accept meetings of August the 15th, 2024, as presented.
Hearing a first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Hearing a first and a second, any additional discussion or corrections? I guess for corrections, then I think it's, um, I guess we don't even necessarily have to do it that way. We sometimes list absent members.
Yeah, I didn't know. Did you want me to do that or Lorraine do that going forward, just write who is absent?
I mean, it's purely formatting. What does the board have any thoughts one way or another?
I think people who are on the board should be listed either present or absent.
Okay.
Yep.
That's my opinion.
Anybody feel differently?
No, it's fine. I'm fine with that.
Okay, we see now.
So would you take a friendly amendment to your motion to make that correction to the minutes? Francois.
I'm sorry, yes, I do.
Excellent, thank you. Any other correction?
No other corrections.
Okay. All right, so not hearing any other corrections or discussions, calling for a vote.
Your eye?
Deck eye.
And the chair is eye, the minutes are accepted. So before we hop into into business, I just want to make a couple quick announcements so that everybody knows where we're at for tonight and so that we have some introductions around the table. So Patricia is still helping out with the planning board a little bit as we transition through these times, but as everybody has met Alec, we'll spare a formal introduction for him again because this is technically his second meeting. And also thanks to Alec for a very significant amount of prep work that went into the materials for this meeting. I really do believe it's the beginning of a new era for us to be able to get stuff done and be consistent. And thanks to Patricia for her assistance with the planning board over the years and her continued assistance. We have a new face at the table. So please say hello and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Michaels. I moved to Hubbardston three years ago, trying to get involved with the community. I've done some work with the senior center as a volunteer and on the board for this COA. And now I think it's time for me to move on and get a little bit more involved, so I'm looking forward to working for the land use.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
We're, as you'll see, we're talking about several things tonight to try to support you as best as we can in terms of formalizing and improving our process so that we can be very consistent and have forms that are manageable. So we're getting on our way and we're going to talk about that a whole bunch more as we move down the agenda. So jumping into new business, we have an A and R that's come up again. So how I would like to take this is I'd like the applicant to tell us a little bit about what's going on with it and then we're going to call on Alec, who is now our in-house professional, that's going to talk to us about it and tell us what he sees and what we can do and how we can potentially move forward. With that said, please tell us a little bit, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what you do.
Yeah, my name is Bob Borogod. I'm the previous general manager for the Country Hen. I retired, but they still got me working. So we submitted, we had previously submitted a plan to split the small lot out of the balance. And that was rejected, but I've since find out that, so this is a question more than than anything else, is that there's a new zoning law update and I don't know how long it takes to go into effect, but the first plan we submitted would be the ultimate for us. That's really what we want to do. We thought, since that was rejected, that our next option was the plan that was just submitted, I don't know, two weeks ago, whenever it was. I guess my question is, can we, can we either continue this so that I can get answers to that question or if you can answer my question, I don't know if you can do that or not.
So I don't, I don't believe that any of us, including Alec, can answer that question in detail because we're waiting for some regulations to come out related to it. But just to bring the public and the board up to speed, there has been a piece of legislation which has substantially altered the merger doctrine, which is something that we spoke about in great detail at the last meeting. And that piece of legislation has been passed and signed since we last met to talk about it. So we, there are open questions about how that's going to be interpreted by the registry, who is ultimately the folks we need to be happy with a lot of this, and how it's going to be interpreted by other state agencies. Alec, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add to that?
No, just that I haven't had a depth of time to review the plan in too much detail, but now that I'm on board, I am happy to take meetings on materials exactly like this. It's free of charge to you because I'm not a consultant of the town, I'm an agent of the town, and so I'm happy to sit down and talk through this with you. To the applicant's question about an extension, while it's not, it's not typical when A and R plans are submitted, through a written extension agreement, you can extend any application process. You just need to cite out the date of your decision requirement. So you could either have the applicant withdraw, there would be no prejudice to such withdrawal, or you could enter into a written agreement to extend to your next meeting, at which time you can make a decision.
Does the board have any preference on that before I ask the applicant?
My preference would be personally that he just remove the A and R and then come back to us when he's ready. I think it's cleaner that way.
I agree.
And that it doesn't put the burden of responsibility on us monitoring dates and anything of that nature, especially given the fact that, and it really goes into a question that I have, is when is this law effective as of when? Is it effective on a future date? Is it effective immediately?
Do you know what the effective date is? I know the regulations still aren't out, but do you know what the effective date is, Alec?
I don't know without hand now.
Yeah, it, I, I don't want to misquote it, but it wasn't far out. It wasn't one of those ones where it's like two years down the road.
But since we don't know, I think it'd be best if we just simply say, let him retract it.
Yeah.
And then bring it back when everything is settled.
I would also suggest that just because we don't know when the regulations are going to come out and it doesn't make sense that you keep coming back to a meeting to re-sign a piece of paper to extend it out.
Right, I understand. So the ultimate would be the original. So we'll withdraw this.
Okay.
We'll withdraw this plan so I don't waste any more of your time.
Okay.
And we'll just come back and resubmit a new application now or?
Alec has his hand up on this point.
Yeah, so I was going to say, Bob, if you are willing to make your withdrawal at the conclusion of this meeting, I will send you an email and that has a booking component. And if next Friday or at your earliest Friday convenience, you want to book an appointment with me, you and I can sit down, talk through, and I can do some research in the interim to try and find some dates that'll help work with you and help you understand your timeline.
Okay, sounds good.
Excellent, so noting for the record, the chair accepts the withdrawal of the application. Is there any other action we need to take to formalize that, Alec?
Nothing further, just reflect it in your next seven minutes.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you for coming in and thank you for being patient as everybody hears out. This is, I mean, it's going to be one of the first ones under the new law anywhere, so everywhere, everybody across the states is trying to figure it out, so thank you for your patience.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
All right.
Have a good evening, folks.
Sweet, no, 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 I don't want this. I don't want this responsibility.
Thank you. We're gonna have, when we, I guess I do have another question. The question is, when we resubmit the new plan, do we have to make another payment? Or can the payment from this withdrawal be held for that?
Nate's the ultimate keeper of the funds and the decision on that.
Okay, so you'll let me know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you again.
All right, so moving on to the agenda and also adjacent to what we just talked about, there were some material revisions to the provisions in Chapter 48 specifically about what towns can and can't regulate through special permits. Again, those are the Dover amendments that have come up and have been something we've been self-educating on and been schooled on in the last few years. And one of those changes that came up is related to accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Now, not too long ago, we passed a, one of the first, a very well-thought-out and forward-thinking ADU bylaw. And our purpose for this bylaw was to make it easier for people to have ADUs because we had constituents asking for that, and also make it so that there was a clear process around it. Well, the state law as it has come out has an impact and it says some things you can and can't do with an ADU bylaw. So, and the time we hadn't met, I asked Alec to start taking a look at this and do a comparison between what the law is and what our by, what the state law, the new state law is, and what our bylaw is, and some of the things that we would have to think about in order to make our bylaw be compliant. And the good news is, is well, we were fairly forward-thinking, so we actually ended up pretty close to where the state ended up when they were looking at this from a public policy standpoint. So with that as an introduction, I would like to throw it over to Alec to tell us a little bit about his review and just summarize for the public who may not be aware of what's going on here, what your findings were and your recommendations are.
Thank you very much, Chris. Yeah, I'm happy to walk through this for everybody, for the public in the room and anyone who may be reviewing in later time. I'm about to share my screen real quick. Bear with me as I just get that up. All right, perfect. So to the planning board, this is how you'll typically see my correspondence come in in memo format.
Can you leave some?
They have various attachments to it, but in, can you see this, Chris?
Can you zoom in just a little bit?
Yes.
We all have paper copies, so we can see it on those, but it's challenging to see it on the screen.
Perfect.
This will get a little trimmed there, but.
Right, we got, there we go.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Perfect. Okay, so this is how you'll typically see my correspondence come in. I'll try to provide opinions and recommendation memos as they help memorialize the work. So as Chris was saying, the Affordable Homes Act dealt deeply into accessory dwelling units and in layman's terms, opened them wide up. The intent of the law was to advance fair housing practice, and accessory dwelling units is an emerging theme by which various homeowners as well as future tenants can either profit off of their available living space or in the case of tenants can find an affordable living space as they are today. The Affordable Homes Act made it so that you cannot prohibit accessory dwelling units in zoning districts that allow single-family residential. And to that end, it also stayed silent on certain components, and I believe that silence was intentional, as do a lot of folks in the legal field today as well, although I must note I'm not a practicing attorney here. So the recommendations you receive from me tonight are that of a planner. This document has not been reviewed by a legal expert and I cannot speak to legality of it, but as a planner, this is what I feel we need to do to your bylaw to at least start bringing it up to compliance. I'll note that none of this has been tested because the law doesn't take effect until February. I expect very shortly thereafter, we'll start seeing some case law come out that'll better direct us. But I agree and I hope the town will take an approach where we attempt to be proactive and get ahead of it, at least to the best of our ability. So in the memo you see in front of you, you'll see elements highlighted in red, so you'll see all of Article 24, your accessory dwelling unit bylaw is in front of you. Components that are highlighted in red are those things that I find most egregious compared to the law and things that I believe will be prohibited or are outright prohibited as stated in the law itself. Those items shown in yellow may be plausible, but there are going to be some tests put to those, no doubt. And additionally, you'll see I've provided a section in green text highlighted in yellow that I think we can, we can consider bringing forward as well. Overall, your bylaw was not far off. I will note that there were certain components, for example, requirements for bedroom size, requirements for owner occupancy, and then the owner occupancy definition of having to live there for at least five months per year. That is challenging. That does not necessarily comply with the law. In fact, it would be quite egregious and would likely fail if tested in a court of law, so I'd recommend striking those sections shown in red. And as I said, the section shown in yellow, they're not far off, but they might be inaccurate in the future. We'll only know that once it's tested, so. In short, anywhere you see red and yellow text, red text we will want to strike, yellow text you may want to consider striking. I'll note specifically in one section, you list 1,000 square feet or 50% of the living area contained in a single-family residence can be the maximum size of the ADU. The state defines an ADU as 900 square feet or 50% of the single-family home. That's certainly smaller than what you do, not by much, but there's nothing in the law that prohibits you from considering a definition that is slightly larger. The only recommendation I would make is not to go below 900 feet. So if you wish to continue your definition of 1,000 square feet, you're more than welcome to do so. That's a lot all at once, so I'll go ahead and I'll pause here. I'll take down my screen share so that I can see the board better, but if at any point you want me to bring something up, just let me know.
Thank you. So just to jump in from a board history standpoint and kick off the discussion, we had had a lot of discussions about this. It was when I was fairly early on the board, although it feels like forever ago. Anyways, it, it was intended at the time to really be fairly broad and fairly enabling. The idea of the planning board was not to write it in a way where these were restrictive rules, it was to write it in a way where they were enabling rules because that was the feedback we were getting from our constituents at the same time. From a historical standpoint, the reason that there was a special permit attached to an ADU that was built above a garage is because on a non-conforming lot, our bylaws require a special permit in order to build a garage, which is where that came from and we were trying to be internally consistent. So with that to kick it off, what are some of the thoughts from the rest of the board?
I have a question, and it really in regards to a section here that was highlighted in red, and I just would like to get a clarification here. By virtue of the fact that in Section 5.1, I'm sorry. The very last bullet item on the first page, where you have something in yellow or in amber, it says a special permit is required to build an accessory dwelling unit on a lot that does not conform to the semi, the dimensional regulations contained actually in Article 5, Section 5.1, and, and then afterwards in red, to build or add an accessory dwelling unit above a garage that is detached from a single-family house. By removing that, does that imply that pre-existing units that are in, on top of a garage, which are currently considered to be accessory dwelling units, would be prohibited?
No, so in fact, what I'm recommending, removing that portion shown in red, what it makes is it allows a single family, or it's, in a certain sense, it allows accessory dwelling units in detached, detached garages by right. And so the law doesn't allow you to apply a special permit just because it's over a detached garage. You'd have to allow that by right.
Okay, so it's by right that you are allowed therefore to have a ADU on top of a detached garage?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you for that clarification. Which then brings me to the next item, which would be on Section 24.2. Where it says accessory, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the seventh bullet, where it says accessory dwelling unit additions must be attached to the owner-occupied single-family residence through a common wall. Is that still there for applicable? And then it says a breezeway connection is insufficient. I hope you understand where I'm going with this here. Because in the cases where you do have a detached garage, say for example, and a accessory dwelling unit above that, you're definitely not going to be, you're definitely not going to have a.
A common wall.
A common wall. And it says it must be attached to the owner-occupied single-family residence, but for me, that is contradictory.
So when looking at this section, you specifically use the term additions, that would be an addition to the home. In the case of a breezeway connection is insufficient, I would argue that a breezeway connection could be sufficient, and that's why you may want to strike that section. If you're doing it as an addition to the home and you wanted to share a wall or use a breezeway, I think either could be appropriate. I think that whole side probably needs some more crafting, not just the portion shown in yellow, but the test you're putting to it could cause, could cause a contradiction.
And that's where I was going with this here because I do believe that it, the way at least I read this here, it says the accessory dwelling unit additions, and what's there to say that you cannot build an addition on top of a detached garage?
Yeah, so in reality, you may want to end up striking that entire sentence, in which case you effectively remove the breezeway component as well. I think you'd be safe to do so in general. There's nothing real risky about not requiring a common wall. Frankly, it's out the door now that you're allowed to do detached by right anyways, and so I would recommend striking that sentence.
So in, in terms of, of where we need to try to go with this tonight, we don't need to get this to the point of where we have a new ADU bylaw. We just need to decide as a board if this is something that we're going to invest our time and Alex's time in. And how I would, what I would suggest that that look like is that Alec work with a small working group from the board and come up with a updated version to present back to the board, and then if the board likes it, after deliberation and discussion, we would then advertise and post it for public hearing and try to get it on the warrant for the next town meeting. And I also want to add that, that I think this is going to be the first of probably four or five times or four or five projects that go on this year for the spring warrant because we have a pretty good jump on it from the calendar. And we also have Alec in, I mean, this is a total game changer from where we're previously at with these things.
When do we anticipate the ADU law to be enacted or be effective?
May 2nd, 2025 is when it's effective.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. And it does make sense from a calendar perspective.
Yeah, and this was also super popular when it went up at town meeting originally. It drew three negative, three no votes. I mean, the motion to adjourn. And that is unheard of for something passing with that margin, never mind a zoning rule. So that is really pretty super popular, so.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people would be disappointed if we didn't take action on this and, and keep it going as an able.
I mean, the reason I'm bringing this up, I mean, is that I personally know of other people who have that situation. I personally have that situation also, and it's certainly something I was harping on. And so for all intents and purposes, I, I'm fine with the other items, I really have no question. This is the only one question I did have on it. And yes, I would agree, it makes sense for Alec to take this, refine it, bring it back, and let's get something on the warrant so that we can get this over the board, over to the town and have them review and approve hopefully next year.
Well, Alec with a couple members on a working group is what I was suggesting. Is there, is there anybody who would like to volunteer to work with Alec on this?
I'm happy to spend some time with Alec. I, I honestly think you've got it almost.
Yeah, I think.
It's pretty, it's pretty clean, and I think you have a very good grasp of what's potentially still needs to be made here or done to this year. So I think we'll probably get this done fairly fast.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a pretty light lift for that working.
Yeah, I'm happy to meet with Alec a few times and.
Anybody else interested in that one?
Don't everybody rush to this here.
Well, there's, there's, there's going to be others, so.
Yeah.
All right, so.
I'll volunteer for this one.
Awesome, so make, make sure that's reflected in the minutes and Alec and, Alec and Francois will catch up about this.
And Alec, you can get in touch with me via email, with a town email.
Sounds great. I'll forward you something active this evening.
Thank you.
And Francois can certainly keep, can speak to the history of this and the constituent feedback that we got that generated our regional ADU bylaw because we certainly got some.
Sounds great.
Alec, Francois will be a good person to talk to regarding the battery and storage stuff as well, so that'll be a good, that'll be a good link.
Sounds great. I'm sure we'll work together a bunch there.
Well, we're not going to put that up as a working group until the next meeting, so. All right, so moving down the agenda, the next thing is opinion on earth removal applications in the context of construction and development. So Alec, can you give us a, this is something that we reached out to Alec about because we've had some, some questions from constituents in terms of, well, what is earth removal not reasonable in terms of building permit because you are allowed to do some earth removal reasonably within a building permit? So Alec has been researching this and I'm sure is going to contradict with my 30,000-foot view of introduction, so I'm just going to turn it right over to him.
Well, thank you for that, Chris. So I want to preface this for everybody, this is something that Chris and Nate brought to my attention pretty early on, is that earth removal can be at times a sensitive subject in the town of Hubbardston, and you're not alone in that regard. There are a lot of communities that have, that have experienced sand and gravel pits. Throughout the years, they were a heavy industry at one time, they came with nuisance, and of course, the big dig, as you're familiar, certainly had. as you're familiar, certainly had an impact on certain communities as well, as they came for valuable resources. Many of these bylaws were passed at a reactionary point, so communities were feeling the effect, they were, they were seeing it on a day-to-day basis. And so these bylaws were put into place to prevent that in the future or better regulate it. But unfortunately, whenever a bylaw is passed reactionary, it doesn't take into account certain future factors, because we don't know what those will be. No bylaw can look to the future and predict a hundred percent what's going to happen. And so a common trend that I've been coming across, not only in Hubbardston, but other communities that I work and other communities I'm doing research in, is that these bylaws often contradict with the construction process. And so you don't have a memo in front of you, because it's a very large and comprehensive matter. But what I've come across and what I'm finding is that much of, much of a community's site plan review rules and regulations often are sufficient or otherwise invalidate provisions of, uh, earth removal bylaws. Now, that's not to say that they're complete. In many cases, site plan review rules and regulations could be bumped up to include more robust restoration standards, for example. Of course, a site plan review can be reasonably conditioned, so you can condition it to cover the gaps where earth removal would otherwise be used. But unfortunately, the way these laws are often written is something that would be done by construction, still triggers an earth removal bylaw. And further, and even more unfortunate, uh, because of the construction occurring, sometimes it is impossible to restore the land to the standard required under an earth removal bylaw, because the earth removal bylaw didn't consider that there would be an end product. It considered that there would be leftover land that in some way needed to be restored. I had not done a thorough enough reading of your two bylaws as of right now. I know your site plan is done via bylaw, not via rules and regulations. But I think it's not insurmountable that you could in some way absorb regulations from your earth removal bylaw, put them into your site plan review, either in the form of a bylaw or in the form of rules and regulations. And then you could consider an exemption for, uh, construction that is otherwise permitted. Site plan review gives you a bite of the apple quite intensively, and it allows you to take the same considerations you would take in an earth removal permit, but often it extracts out that sensitivity and the red flags that come up when people hear earth removal. The facts of today are that we don't have quite nearly the volume. The earth removal bylaw and permit can certainly still stand to protect for those future scenarios where it could occur. But site plan review often is enough to cover the bases and results in an end product much better than just a leftover sand and gravel pit, which I assume many people would agree is the ultimate end goal. We want to work with, uh, potential developers, potential homeowners, to put something on the ground at the end. And to the extent that an earth removal bylaw would contradict or make that impossible, we need to find scenarios and ways that we can keep the door open while still remaining sensitive to the impacts of the surrounding neighborhoods.
All right, any questions from the board on that report?
So as I mentioned to you, Mr. Chair, uh, I, I, I think the past earth removal projects that we've had here in town, specifically the gravel and the sand pits and I think even the clay pit, are well-known to the town. Part of what I also would like to think about is the current and existing cases I think that we have here in town where there appear to be some pretty large projects that are at least in my mind, in the questionable zone in terms of what is actually happening there. Uh, and I, I think you and I know the, the cases in, 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 that I'm referring to. I don't want to bring them up public, because I think they need to be reviewed and first, uh, looked into. But it really has to do with areas where we are seeing a significant amount of what appears to be earth move, uh, earth removal movement within a property, but it's not quite clear what is happening there. And in my opinion, there's also very little disclosure in terms of what that project is and also potentially to ensure that those projects are not becoming earth removal, uh, or subject to earth removals. And that's just one area that I just want to make sure that we're going down that avenue and make sure that we have some means by which we're looking into this here. How to do that, I don't know. And I don't know what the powers of the planning board are versus maybe another entity in town, be that the, the building inspector, be that select board or whoever else. But I, I, I do know of various different projects that are happening here in town during other, in, in, in existing lots at this point in time, where there's significant machinery, uh, movement of earth, and there's question about what is happening there. And as to whether or not they have a valid building permit and for how long do they have that building permit for. And so I think we just need to make sure that we're exploring maybe some concrete cases and see whether or not they fall in or not into this here. And how do we make sure that we as members of the planning board or some other entity within the town has at least a, some visibility into this here and ensures that this is done correctly and, 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 and is done properly.
Okay. Alec, did you follow that? So essentially, what Francois was bringing up is that the board has previously discussed this. There's been some situations in town where, uh, there has been allegations of somebody performing earth removal without receiving an earth removal permit, but, um, justifying it under a traditional building permit. And I guess there's an open question that nothing's ever actually been built on the property. But we want to look at it and make sure we're also thinking of those situations. And in that situation, it's not something that would have been subject to a site plan review, because we only do site plan review with special permits. Uh, our bylaws don't have revision for standalone site plan review, which is something that we're absolutely going to look at. Uh, additional questions and comments from the board?
Chris, would you like me to, to respond to Francois's kind of questions and probings a little bit there?
Yeah, absolutely, if you have a response for it.
Yeah, so I'll note, your rules and regulations have a very well-defined enforcement and penalties procedure. It's spelled out quite effectively, it clearly constitutes who can take action. That's either the planning board's designated agent or the building inspector, if you don't have a designated agent otherwise. To the extent that, to the extent that any property owner, and this is all hypothetical, because I don't know any details, but to the extent that any property owner did take a path where they, they pulled a building permit for construction activity that never actually came to fruition or only made its pathway through, your building official has the authority to pull a building permit. They can revoke it if they feel that substantial completion has not been reached by a certain date. And at that point, you would be able to subject such a property to the enforcement and penalties process of your bylaw. It requires intensive monitoring, and I can speak from experience working in a permitting office, that that is not always the most fun thing to do. But I think through an open dialogue with your, with your agent, you could explore some options, some alternatives, and maybe get some more information as to the content of what the, what the original building permit was for. I'll note that all building permits are subject to public records, so you as a board, if you suspect something is, is being done inaccurately to the permit that was pulled, you can request to simply see the building permit, you can put eyes on it yourself. But I do always caution, trust your building official and ask them questions in advance of any meeting where you think you'll be speaking about something.
I appreciate that, I mean, the situation has been is our building inspector is fairly new out here, and this project has some of the projects that are in question actually started before the building, the existing building inspector was part of this, uh, town's staff. And so as a result of that, I think there's this element of, I want to say confusion or maybe lack of transparency. And not, not on the part of the building inspector, but rather in terms of understanding what the whole, where the project stands right now or how it got instantiated. I think the fact that you're bringing up the, that we can actually see what the building permit was, is, if it, if it is still, if it's still there, meaning if it's still in effect, uh, it is a great avenue for us to get started here. And I think it's certainly one that we can, can and should explore right away. And then shed some light into some of these projects themselves.
Yeah. Um, Chris, if I could take a step further too. A useful conversation would probably be to speak with your building inspector and get a sense of their comfortability with earth removal as a standalone activity. For example, I've worked with a building commissioner who's told me outright that he's not experienced in stormwater, it's not his forte, he's not an engineer. And so he was not designated as the, uh, the specific agent to enforce the stormwater bylaw, because it wasn't his bailiwick. And he was very forthcoming with that information, and instead, we've worked, uh, through planners and, uh, and engineers to enforce that bylaw instead. So I think it'd be reasonable to have a conversation, especially if there's any newness to the position as to how comfortable they are. And if they're willing to, perhaps get them engaged in some training activities too.
Okay, well, let's, um, let's refer this line of questioning and thought to the office and to the staff and we'll, we'll come back to it for the meeting about any specific examples. And let's turn the discussion back to general thoughts on what, um, what Alec is suggesting we start looking at. Uh, and it's fine if there aren't many general thoughts at the time, because this is really just a general report. And, um, it, it's really part of a larger conversation that's going to go on over the next several meetings as we start to look at our, um, our process and our rules around applications and, uh, start to modernize them and make them more manageable for the staff and for, for the public. So it's fine if there isn't a lot to talk about on this one, it's just a data point. All right, so if there's no further questions, Alec, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, no, I don't think so. Next steps for me, as I said, I'm going to need to, to dive further into your, your site plan bylaw. I have become quite familiar with it, because I've been drafting use and cover sheets, which we'll talk about shortly. But, uh, I'll need to do a side-by-side comparison of the two. It's more of a suspicion that I've had from reviewing other communities, but I suspect that there is a, a group of overlap or even contradiction, um, on the contrary, between, uh, between the two. And I need to understand where those exist and highlight where, if any, there would be such a contradiction that it could even prevent future activity. That side-by-side comparison can be done and then a memo can be generated. I think ultimately, my recommendation back to the board is either going to be adopt, uh, robust site plan rules and regulations that give you greater flexibility and allow you greater ability to respond as you see projects upcoming. Alternatively, uh, it could be a two-part bylaw revision where you revise both your, uh, earth removal as well as your site plan bylaws.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so if there's no further questions from the board on that, we're going to move down into administrative matters. And the next one is going to put Alec right back on the spot, which is the, um, the DLTA project list and issues tracker. Now, we had, um, we had been working on this as a board and looked at it several times, uh, over the last few years. One of the first charges I gave Alec when he walked in the door was to help us even figure out what we're talking about. Because in terms of how we talk about some of the projects, we talk about a need, but we weren't necessarily talking about a solution that matched up against what we were identifying as a need, because we're not, we're not professional planners, we don't know all the grant programs, we don't have experience doing it in other communities. So I asked Alec to take a, a very thorough look at it and get it all into one place so that we eventually can have a discussion about prioritizing some of these things. So, um, Alec's done that and I've walked through with him, uh, through it with him, and I think it's at the point where we can start talking about it as a board. I don't think it's yet at the point of, um, where we can start throwing priorities on two things, but I'd like to do that within the next meeting or two. Alec, are you able to share that up on the screen?
Yep, I'm happy to do so. Uh, bear with me as I get the screen share up and running again.
Yeah, when, um, and also just for, um, just from a process standpoint, it was difficult for us to get in and blow that up to a size that was really usable in a way that it was shared over to us. So we, we were able to get it if we squinted really hard and zoomed in, but it was challenging.
That's why I didn't even bother printing it, because I printed one and I was like, nope, nope, that's not going to work.
Yeah, so.
I would, I would not recommend printing this. Um, the, the form that this would typically be printed in is on a quater printer at very large scale. Typically, this would be done, so let me, let me share my screen with the board so that everyone can see what, uh, what Chris and Patricia and I are referring to. So, um, hopefully this is, I don't expect this to be legible right now, but hopefully you're seeing this large mural titled Hubbardston Projects. Uh, you'll see some internal projects, some technical assistance projects. You'll see it's even been updated for projects awaiting consideration. And there's even a link embedded right in here for, uh, board members, uh, and members of the administrative team to consider adding new projects and priorities. The way that I developed this was a reversed engineered public engagement exercise. Say we were at a public forum, I would lay this blank sheet out on here, or out on a table in front of you. I would have post-it notes that correspond with the colors over here. Uh, yellow for preparedness activities, blue for site-specific activities, zoning bylaws and operational regulations. You would then take your post-it notes, you would write directly on them, and then you would stick it on whether you think it's an internal or a technical assistance side. Further, on this side over here, um, I've delineated space, uh, for the board to be able to prioritize its projects at a later date and time. Um, but of course, we're not there yet, and we've only just started discussing this. So I can zoom in quite a bit, where we can see the individual details on the individual post-it notes. And so we have even, we have everywhere from large-scale solar full of, of, like, revisions. We have updated and revised subdivision rules and regulations, uh, annual reporting on cannabis and solar facilities, Hubbardston evaluation specific to the Northern Tio rail expansion. But there's a wide range of things. The color coding helps, because it allows you to break out what some of these projects are before you even get into it. What I can do is very easily, I can shrink this down, reorganize it, uh, and put it to a size that it can be printed for people's individual resources. Additionally, what I'll eventually do is convert this to a PDF. That's a lot better, screen specific size, it'll make it easier for you. But effectively, I'm breaking these down into two categories, internal projects and technical assistance projects. So Chris started this, used the term DLTA, for those who don't know, that's downtown local technical assistance. What that allows, uh, you to do is to work with your regional council of government. But additionally, there are other grant resources out there, and those are the projects that I believe fall into the technical assistance category. Those that we would seek additional funding, uh, to be able to explore using an outside entity. There are several projects that you've seen, I've tagged as internal projects. Now, that's to say, I think we could handle them in-house quite effectively, whether that's myself and one or two other individuals, whether it's myself and a partnering board or committee outside of just the planning board. There are effective ways that we can get stuff on the internal side done. And that's either because the nature of it is so unique and specific to us that we really can't look elsewhere to have these questions answered. Or alternatively, it's, it's very effective and it's very quick for us to simply pick up the work and tackle it. You'll see some projects have arrows leading to others, that's because I've either chosen to take some liberties and rewrite them, um, or in some cases, uh, one might dovetail into the other. What is yet to be done is the prioritization. So right now, you've only got a left hand and a right hand, internal and technical assistance. But part of my goal here, uh, with the town of Hubbardston, for however you'll have me, is to prioritize these over time. So what steps are we going to take, in what order, to continue to move the work forward? I only have so many hours that I can be with you in a week, and so my time does need to be prioritized. But additionally, you and any of the people I work with are all volunteers. And so I can't burn you out just by throwing ten projects at you all at once, we have to be effective with the time that we use. And so what I'll do next is put this into a digestible and easily, easily read format, so that way you can review it on your own time of leisure. Uh, and then we can come back to a future meeting, and I'll let Chris kind of guide the timeline of when we start prioritizing. Uh, but come back to a future meeting, and we can start discussing amongst the team what we think should be done first. And we can break that up into quarters, six-month, or, or year-long increments.
Is there a version that you can, of this that you can share with us sooner rather than later, so that, uh, the board can? So that the board can just get into it in a little more depth. I think I have a link to it, but can we also share them with the board? Keep in mind, we can't deliberate on it, but we can certainly send Alec ideas.
Yeah, absolutely. What I can do is I can take, attempt at time, this Friday in particular, and I can convert this into a much easier format. And I can send it over to everybody. So that way you'll have it starting this weekend.
Our plotter didn't eat dust. I could have printed it out on our plotter, but our plotter has, may it rest in peace, but it is no longer operational at this point.
When was the plotter operational?
Apparently when Mark was here and Mark showed me how to use it my first day. And after that first day, it staged a protest and decided since Mark is gone, it no longer wants to work. And that was the end of that.
Alright, so thank you for that presentation. So I'm pretty excited about this. I know it's, it's kind of a nerdy, boring chart, but looking at it and, and knowing the history behind it and what went into it. This is the most organized, practical approach we've had to putting together prioritizing projects. And being able to put them into actionable, actionable things that we can go after and grant money to and knock them out. This is a absolutely tremendous amount of project progress in a document, despite the fact it looks like kind of a boring chart made out of post-its. When you zoom in, the amount of work that went into each one of those items is pretty substantial. Because there's a full description and there's options and there's ways to tackle it. So once everybody's had a chance to look at that, we need to have a meeting, which will be a pretty important one, where we prioritize those. And figure out, well, what can we work on for the remainder of this year? And then what is pragmatic to kick off for long-term projects that will spill over into future boards? Because some of those projects, they're going to take more than one iteration of the planning board in order to get through. So we need to make sure we're being smart about how we document things and keep them going and leave great notes on, on what we're trying to do. So. Any, any questions from anybody on the board or any, any comments? Anything else you want to add to that, Alec?
Uh, no, just that I, I look forward to working with everyone on this. When, when you go into the field of planning, goal-setting and long-term objectives are what I refer to as the fun stuff. It's the stuff we enjoy doing the most. And so I really do, I do look forward to diving into this project with everybody. And this Friday, you'll get something that is quite legible and that you can work off of going forward.
Thank you. So also submitted with this is, is a brief report on proposed. Or what we would like to become proposed revisions to our planning board applications for site plan and special permits. And what, what this review has done is Nate's worked with the office and looked at the bylaw and I'll let him speak himself on some of this. Looked at the bylaw, talked to Bill Murray and also just examined best practices from other communities. And come up with these proposed forms or hopefully soon-to-be proposed forms. For streamlining and clarifying the special permit process. These also go along with check sheets, which are things that we haven't previously had. Where the office will have a check sheet and every step that goes off in the process gets checked. So that we can have a much more detail-oriented and much more consistent process. And one where we don't have to be constantly chasing things and looking up deadlines and trying to figure all of it out like it's the first time. So I'm, I'm excited about these. I think they're also a, a huge step forward for us. I will also add that apparently the state or CMRPC or somebody just released a boat of forms on. In a similar vein, that we're also gonna look at in conjunction with this. But otherwise, Alec, you wanna talk about what you saw here and what we're doing here with these documents?
Yep, happy to do so. So I believe you have two memos in front of you, one for site plan approval, one for special permit. But effectively, one of the projects that I was immediately set out to do and something that I believe was important to do first in the order of operations. Was to evaluate your current application process and eliminate liability back to the town or to you as a board individually. The cover sheet to your application should be the gateway. It should be something that the lay public can understand. And something that an engineer or an experienced applicant can swiftly maneuver to provide information back to the board. In reviewing the cover sheets and the materials that you've been using so far, I found that there was a lot of liability out there. They put a lot of onus on myself as a planner or Bill Murray as your consulting engineer. To source out information that the applicant could otherwise state for us. The risk associated to that, if you approve a site plan or you approve a special permit, you're approving any waivers that are inherently necessary to get the work done. And so to the extent that the applicant includes, when I was going through planning school, it was always referenced as the, the twenty-foot by thirty-foot American flag. You don't see it on the plan set, but if all of a sudden it's out there in front of you, next thing you know, it's waving ten feet away from town center. You as the board didn't expect to see that. Well, you approved it on the plan set, even though it was only a little circle and a dot shown on the plan, you approved it, so it's there. Now, of course, this doesn't go into such granular detail. Please tell us the size of any American flags on the site as you propose it. But these proposed sheets that you have in front of you require them to give us information on the lot area. Frontage, setbacks, driveway numbers, traffic estimates, to declare from the get-go any hazards that they expect to see. And then at the very end, the applicant is requested to attest to the information they're providing you. That's important because their attestation is that this is what they believe to be true. And by declaring that it is true, should we find at a later date in time that they misrepresented information to you. It gives you better recourse to pursue enforcement of your permits as you believe they were supposed to be. Further, we do provide an application checklist. This is important that the applicant is given this on the front end because it's more clear and transparent, the level of work and detail that's required to go into an application. The vast majority of both checklists are taken directly from your zoning bylaw. Additionally, we threw a couple of things in there, USB flash drives, that it's less of a burden on your administrative staff. And they don't have to spend time over at Staples getting things scanned in. I had spoken with Bill Murray regarding these sheets. We exchanged email communication on the two. And I will just share in one case here. And please do note, if you want me to zoom in as I did before. But you'll see I've highlighted, Bill called out to my attention that you have what's a pretty standard tax bylaw. In that you as the board are not to process applications unless an applicant can prove that they are current on their taxes. Or if they're not, that they have entered into such a payment plan as they're legally allowed to with your tax collector. What we'll do is we'll generate a standard form tax collector's letter by which they declare the parcels in question. Tax collector does a quick search, they sign on it and that's good for, typically you do one quarter. But then they submit it alongside everything. This allows them to understand the requirements of the submittal. It makes it easier on your administrative staff. So they don't have to spend as much time flipping through everything. And instead, they can spend the time processing the digital versions, getting it uploaded and sent off to myself, Bill and yourselves for review. My goal of this exercise in broad terms, I wanted to take down the burden of you. You're volunteers who give your time because you have a passion for a community. But without knowing your backgrounds, I, I'm gonna go out and let me guess you didn't sign up to be engineers. That's probably not what you wanted to do when you joined the planning board. And you're lucky that you have Bill Murray there and any experience you might have independently as well. But this takes the burden off of yourselves and off of us to be finding the answers where oftentimes we can ask them to declare the information to us. Thankfully speaking too, your bylaws in this case don't delegate specific application materials to be used. And so it's my opinion that you can adopt these by simple majority vote at a duly noticed public meeting where this appears on the agenda. And that has occurred tonight. So if you wish to use these forms going forward, as I've amended them. Noting that I've included the tax collector letter certification on both. Then you can simply pass a majority vote tonight and the office can begin using these tomorrow.
So I would, I would like to start using these, but I, I disagree with the assessment that we appropriately noticed it on the agenda. So I think we have to hold it to the next meeting. At least in version, I'm looking at the agenda and looking at the file.
I would agree.
So we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting and we'll have, well, I'll call for a motion. But before we do that, does anybody on the board have any questions or concerns about this?
No, I think this is absolutely what we need.
Can I just, as an administrative standpoint?
Excellent job, excellent job, Alec. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to make the process easier.
Patricia?
Uh, as an administrative standpoint for these, when Alec handed them over, I took a really hard look at like what the procedures are now for administratively versus what this will cause. This will cause it to be completely streamlined. This will make sure that we're not chasing down applicants for this, that, twenty other things. It clearly states that this is the information needed. It's right on top. I'm not searching through six hundred pages of nonsense to get to the heart of what you guys I know are gonna ask. When we come to a public hearing, when you ask for our narrative about the special permit. Before I couldn't say anything because it would take me seven hundred pages to find one answer, let alone. So this will make it much easier on you guys because your questions that you always ask me are right on top here.
This is, good progress.
Thank you for the work on that. Any other questions? Alright, so let's move down the agenda to matters not reasonably anticipated by chair. I guess I'll start out with one. Apparently chair and the MRPC meeting tomorrow night, which is a matter that is not anticipated by chair. But if anybody wants to join, they're always entertaining, especially when I chair them. MRPC did recently produce a, an updated grant list and it's really quite good. They've gotten much better at keeping track of them at the office and put them together. They have a person who's specifically responsible for it. I believe this list has been sent out to everybody, but as many sets of eyes that can look at this, the better. Because I, I think there are some pretty great opportunities that are potentially hidden in it. But, but the challenge is, is when they get circulated, no, but somebody just has to step up and be like, I think we can do something for that. So the more eyes, the better.
And where is this list available?
Uh, I think I emailed, did I email to everybody?
Uh, definitely emailed it to me.
Yeah, I can.
So I can forward it along as, as, as wanted, needed.
Okay, I'm not saying that I, that you didn't. I mean, I may have missed it myself, but.
No, no, it, it, no, it's totally fine. So if you don't see it, um, just shoot me a line and I'll, I'll get it to you tomorrow morning.
Okay. Yeah, I thought I sent it to everybody. If I didn't, I'll double check and, and make sure.
And again, I'm not suggesting you did not. I'm just saying that I, I may have missed it on my end.
I guess also in terms of, and this is just a general update, there was the first meeting of the digital equity group.
Yep.
And it was a meeting, people talk, stuff happened at it. But there are steps for future proceeds to come out of that. And the, the digital equity program is what Massachusetts is calling the BEAT program. And other states, the BEAT program just immediately turned and said, hey, the right answer is to connect fiber to everybody's houses. For some reason, when Massachusetts received federal money, they decided they needed to create their own GAKAMANI process. Instead of just creating money for collecting, connecting every house to fiber. So we've launched a committee as a town in order to engage in that process, to hopefully push us towards that goal. Which was ultimately the goal of the federal government when they made these funds available to states. So we're, we're playing the game, the process and hoping to get there. I don't know, Francois, if you have anything else you want to add to that, because you were also at the meeting.
I, I just found it very funny that maybe about a week later, I suddenly had a gentleman from Spectrum at the door. Saying that, we're doing a great job. And I said, no, you're not. That's why I don't have Spectrum here. And I don't want to pounce on Spectrum specifically in the public here, but it was kind of interesting that we suddenly are getting very, much of the existing broadband provider coming down. People's driveways knocking on doors and saying, we wanna, we wanna be your broadband provider.
You know what's really funny? After that meeting, the internet here in the town office, it crashed.
Yeah.
It knew we were talking about it, so it just decided to give up.
It blows my mind that Kentucky and Vermont were able to commit to one hundred percent fiber connection to every house based upon this bylaw, this federal law and this funding. But in Massachusetts, it's just, Massachusetts can't get it done because we insist upon this cable cartel system. That makes no sense.
I mean, it surprises me because I have a, you know, I have a, I have a good sort of eyes and ears. And in a place like Cambridge, which is, talk about the Mecca of biotech and high-tech and universities and everything else. And it's like, there's so many places, there's still fiber there. And it's like, you have one provider there that provides you broadband and it's terrible.
Yeah, now if those companies moved to Kentucky, they'd be in the clear.
It, it, it's, it's totally interesting to me that we are still in the dark ages when it comes to digital communication.
Absolutely. Anybody else have any news or updates for the board or anything else from, interesting from other committee engagements?
Nuh, uh, I just wanna let you folks know that from a CPC perspective, we're supposed to have a, the annual meeting that the CPC provides. An overview of not only the financials, but everything that they've done and so forth. That has had to be postponed. It's not happening until sometime this month. The date has not quite occurred. Things are moving in the direction of also getting the applicants to come in and. Put in proposals for CPC bunnies. And then the other one is going to be the CIPC, which is not yet formed, but I do anticipate. And Nate probably has more information on that as to when we may have the first meeting. Because Nate typically provides us with a, a list of all of the upcoming projects. But that'll, that'll happen fairly soon because we need to get everything in line by the first month or two in the, in the new year, so.
And there, on a related note, there was a suggestion from the town administrator, the planning board, submit an item for a recodification of the zoning bylaws. That's not doing any kind of material amendment. It's literally just taking them and put them in a format where they can go on to either Ecode or some other form of electronic management system. Instead of just having our official version be a PDF that's posted to the website. It'll be something that's actually a document control system and has revision controls and some marker could just randomly change. So.
Really important.
That's what we've been, I think some of the estimates we got back on that were like ten or twelve.
I am submitting that regard, like I would love to submit it in partnership with the town clerk and the planning board. But even just on my own, I'll submit it. It's a, it's a decent deal and it's a good amount of work for the price. And we could pay over two years. It's about twelve thousand dollars. It wouldn't get us the actual technical assistance to do the implementation, but it would get us a lot further than we are right now. I've spoken to Alec and the chair and the town clerk about it. We are looking into what it would do to the budget on a year-over-year basis and then likely to move forward from there. The first meeting of the capital improvement committee will likely be either right around the end of the month or first of next month.
That's, okay, good.
And the, the public call for capital improvement projects, that was extended, wasn't it?
Yeah, everything was extended. There were a couple of different things that happened and some quotes were going slower than we anticipated and people. So October tenth is the new deadline for both the public and the internal application process. I'll send out a reminder when I get back to work.
I had one additional item I did want to mention. The website that we have right now for the planning board with news and announcements. I think we are a little bit behind. In terms of updates, I, I still see like the best bylaw there showing up as if it were the bylaw, which it's not. We really need to take that away and.
Um, all it requires is me to go in and I'll teach Lorraine how to do this. And it really is the purview of the town, the website is really in the purview of the town clerk. And I'll just make sure that all you hit is you hit unpublished. It's still in the cabinet so that if we ever need it again, we can pull it. Um, back onto the website. So I'll have it unpublished. What would you like to hear from news and announcements, I guess?
I, I guess, do, do you have?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
So Francois, if you're talking about the current zoning bylaws, I am currently working on it. I sent a email to Carolyn Murray of KP Law last week asking if I could just simply remove Article twenty.
I sent a email to Carolyn Murray of KP Law last week, asking if I could just simply remove Article twenty-three and all references to Article twenty-three, or if I needed to then receive Attorney General approval after the fact. I will hopefully be hearing from her shortly, and we'll do that, and we'll update it. If the planning board wants anybody placed on the website to provide more frequent updates, by all means, just let me know.
That's not what Francois's comment was, but thank you for the update.
Yeah.
Uh, Francois was specifically referencing the news and announcements section on the planning board website.
It just appears, uh, it, it appears with the title "best bylaw," therefore implying that this is the bylaw that we have in place. There's a separate section where we do have our bylaws, and it's kind of, in my opinion, it just contradicts in terms of what we have as a news and announcement, and something that is definitely not a bylaw. We should probably take that out. And I'm assuming that the Article twenty-five agricultural accessory use bylaw may be under the same situation.
Um, so, yeah, we'll, we'll take a, we'll have the office take a look at that.
Not, it's not a biggie, but because it's been in there for, for, for a bit of time, but again, I just think that we, it's a bit stale. We should update that.
Yep. And on a related note, and I think this is probably a question for, for Alec, how do towns typically publish or post like the memos that you submit to us? Is that something we put on the planning board website? Is that something we just make available in the office? Why do folks typically do those? Because they're obviously public records. We've discussed at the meeting.
Yeah, so it can be twofold. If you're trying to be proactive and get things out to the public, what you could do is you could append it to your agenda after the meeting, so that people can always look back at the agenda where it was discussed. It just means re-uploading the agenda or attaching it at the time that the minutes are uploaded next. Otherwise, you could set up a standalone page, so you could just do something. For example, on the left-hand side of your webpage, you have bylaws and regulations, forms, master plan, planning board fees. You could do a, a tab that says memos to the board or correspondence to the board, so into that effect. Alternatively to, some, some towns do take the approach of they, they let the public come to them with what's, what's of interest. Things can be requested out conveniently, but each town takes a, a different approach to it. I'll note, in my other community, we have a standalone page for the town planner, but where I'm only with you so many hours per week, I wouldn't recommend that for Hubbardston, only because I'd spend a, a chunk of time maintaining that, and that would eat into the time that I can spend working with you.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and unless anybody on the board objected, I would suggest that we should just put them on the website, because it is tough enough to get people engaged without having them come to chase us, and it's not like there's anything confidential in them. They're public documents, so I err on the side of disclosure. Uh, if anyone feels differently, we can discuss. So. Is that everybody's consensus?
Yep.
Alright, so yeah, let's, uh, let's take that on as an item to figure out in the office how we're gonna post those up and what we're gonna do with them. So, let's have a leave that. Alright, anybody else have anything else? Alright, if no one has anyone else, let's have a motion.
I'll make the motion. Do we adjourn?
Uh, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Here in a first and a second. It's non-debatable. Calling a vote.
Your side, your eye?
Yeah, I can.
And the chair is eye. We are adjourned at seven forty-four.